Hello and welcome to the beautiful Bailey Center Auditorium on the grounds of Wallace State College and Hattie School. Thank you to our gracious host, Wallace State College and Dr. Vicki Karlowix. The 2025 debate series and question and answer forums continue today with municipal elections, more specifically, the Coleman City School Board election. These events are designed to give the public more unfiltered answers without questions ahead of time, direct comparisons, and meaningful conversation. Now we shift our focus to the candidates running for Place Three. Both Cheryl Harrison and Jessica Savarny are present today to answer questions voters and residents would like to know. We would like to thank them both for showing up for debate. We know this is always a fun thing to participate in. With all that being said, we'll get right into the rules for the candidates. No electronic devices permitted. If there are any smartwatches, they are to be turned off. Questions will alternate, so no candidate answers first or last more than the other. An opening statement is limited to 60 seconds and may be a prepared statement. Time allotted per question will be two minutes. Closing statement is limited to 90 seconds and must be spoken without notes. One rebuttal per question, but only if a candidate calls out the other, and it is set for 45 seconds. Facts only, no accusations without proof. This will only allocate additional time to your opponent. Voters deserve substance over slogans. Talking points will not be enough. So let's begin. Ms. Harrison, would you like to start with your introduction?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to the Tribune and to Wallace State for hosting us today. I'm Cheryl Harrison, your candidate seeking reelection for Coleman City School Board, Place Three. And Ben and I are leaders, visible and active in our community. We're Coleman High School graduates, and that legacy continues with our children, Sophie and Cole. Serving over the past five years has been very rewarding, and I'm very proud of the accomplishments of this board, but I understand there's still work to do. My why remains the same. I believe in the power of student success. I believe in Coleman City Schools. That's why I'm here today. So thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to today's conversation.
Thank you for your opening statement. And Ms. Savarny, would you like to give your opening statement, please?
Okay. My name is Jessica Savarny. I'm a mother. I'm a wife. I'm a former substitute teacher. I am a Wallace State graduate. I'm a longtime volunteer of the CCS school system, and also I am a Wallace State grad and a bear- a proud Bearcat. I attended Coleman City Schools my entire life. I love Coleman City Schools, and I'm very proud of it. I like Cheryl. My family has been at Coleman City Schools their entire life for generations. My great-grandmother went to West Elementary when it was just a small little school. I believe that the board has done the best that they can, and they have done a good job. But I believe that there are things they have not been privy to and that they do not realize is going on, and I think we need to address those issues, and it's just time for change.
Thank you for your opening statement, and we will start with Cheryl on the first. We will go by first names from now on. Cheryl, the first topic is vision. What is your vision for Coleman City Schools over the next five years?
My profession as an interior designer requires vision. So this is something that we take very seriously, and I take very seriously to heart. Where do we see ourselves going? Where are we on the path towards? Initially, that was building schools. We knew we had capacity issues. We knew we had safety concerns. We're building schools. We weren't building schools five years ago. So now where do we go from here? I am most proud, I think, of the progress that we are making in combining East and West Elementary Schools. That is going to be one school, not two separate campuses competing against one another, or this side of town versus this side of town. We're bringing the community together, and we're doing it as one system, one intermediate school, with a fantastic STEM lab, where kids are going to build robots and learn to think critically and be in a space that is both innovative and safe and state-of-the-art for our teachers and our students. So my vision is unity, one of unity, is one of coming together as a community and being the best system that we can be for our students while they're here in class and for their futures. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. And Jessica, the same question on vision. What is your vision for Coleman City Schools over the next five years?
Like I said a while ago, I think the board and the system has done a great job of improving our schools and expanding the schools, and yes, we definitely needed that. We needed better safety. We needed more room because we have so many subdivisions and people moving into Coleman. We have to accommodate for that. But at the same time, I think we focused so much on those buildings and improving those campuses that we forgot our students, and we forgot our teachers, and we forgot to ask them what they truly need. All of that is great, all the technology and the STEM and everything, but we've got to get back to being a community and a family system where we respect each other, we love each other, and we come together for each other.
Thank you for your response, and Jessica, we'll stay with you for question number two on equity and access. How would you ensure all students, regardless of background, have access to the same opportunities and resources?
That's a great question. Coming from West Elementary in the west side of town, I understand that there are a lot of students that feel they don't have the same access that some of the more wealthier families do, and I can see that in some situations. One of the things I think we need to do is I want to strive for us to keep encouraging parents and families to file those free and reduced lunch forms. We are not doing a good enough job at getting them to do that. If we have to incentivize it, then let's incentivize it. Those Title I forms that get filled out, that income helps us to secure Title I funds, which brings in extra teachers, extra classrooms, extra aides for all these students that we also are getting that are non-English speaking students. That helps us out. That helps everyone out. If we have equality for all of those students and the other students, I think that's going to be a key factor.
Thank you for your answer on that question. And Cheryl, same question on equity and access. How would you ensure all students, regardless of background, have access to the same opportunities and resources?
One of those, one of the ways that we are addressing that is by combining these schools, honestly. Right now, East Elementary kids have some opportunities that West Elementary kids don't, and that's really a challenge for those kids at the other school that maybe wanted to go to Space Camp. So I feel in that unifying the schools, then we are bringing our system together. We're able to better share resources that way, which is actually, you know, being good stewards of our resources in that manner. And looking at ways in which we can specifically help children, I know within our pre-K program, our teachers are helping families individually, lower-income families, and they're making a difference in their lives. We have incredible men and women teaching in this system that are reaching out and going above and beyond to help in ways, whether that be intervention or mental health specialists or counselors, that are really looking out for the children that may be, that may be left behind. So continuing to do those things and increasing those programs will always be in the best interest of our students.
Thank you for your reply, and we will move on to question three, which is technology. Cheryl, we will stay with you. What do you see as the right balance between traditional learning and new technology in the classroom?
That's a tricky one. As everyone knows, AI is here. The future is now, and we can't ignore it. So what we're doing as a school system, the superintendent is busy attending conferences and learning, and so are we as a board. So we have to do mandatory training hours, and we're taking the initiative to sit in on lectures and do our due diligence in learning more about AI in education. Just think about this, just one minute. This board that will be elected on Tuesday will write policy concerning AI in our schools. Just think about that. Make sure that the people that you're putting in that position even have an understanding of what that looks like. So how do we, how do we move forward with that? We have conversations. We have open dialogues. We have meaningful conversations to understand how AI can be best utilized in the classroom without sacrificing critical learning and that foundation that our system is so, so good at providing those children. They still need to think for themselves. But of course, we're all going to use those technology tools to make life easier. It will be in their jobs. It's in our jobs right now. So we do, we can't ignore it. The future is here. So we need to work together to make the best plan going forward in how to address it in a meaningful way.
Thank you for your answer. Jessica, same question on technology. What do you see as the right balance between traditional learning and new technology in the classroom?
I think it's, I think it's really easy to focus on the technology and the AI and everything, and we should. I don't think students should be able to go to their computer and say, hey, write me a paper on this, and all of it is spit out to them. But at the same time, I also see where AI can bring information to a child that a teacher may not have time to give during class, because, let's face it, they only have a certain allotted time to teach. We don't have traditional textbooks that much anymore. Everything is on their Chromebooks. So they have to go onto that Chromebook to look up information anyway. My point is, is that we all use AI. We all know it. Writing policy, yes, is going to be difficult, but I'm sure that we can find a happy medium to go in between.
All right. Thank you for that response, and we will stay with you for question number four, dealing with budgeting. How would you set spending priorities when faced with limited funds?
Oh, me? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
How would you set spending priorities when faced with limited funds?
So when faced with limited funds, I think we should, number one, you know, look to our community for help, as, you know, we often do already. We should make sure that we have checked into any and all grant possibilities that are available, any kind of federal funding, state funding, any, any kind of funding that we can secure, we should be able to try to get that. A good example is, is with the county schools. Their students are getting free lunches and breakfasts this year. Our schools are not. Why is that? Is there a grant that we could have applied for that we did not apply for to get that for our students? That would have been awesome for our students, for even middle-class families. If you don't have to worry about that lunch money, that's one thing off of your plate. We need to make sure that we're exploring every option.
All right. Thank you for that answer. And Cheryl, same question.
Just to answer your question, Jessica, it is based on need, and you have to qualify for that. So perhaps one of our campuses qualifies. I'm not sure exactly, but I know all of them do not. So we made the conscious decision to not piecemeal solutions. Every child that is in need qualifies for a free and reduced breakfast lunch, and they are taken care, well, taken care of within our system. And Noah, you're going to have to repeat the rest of the question.
How would you set spending priorities when faced with limited funds?
Yes. Well, this was a big week for our spending priorities, as we had our budget meeting on Tuesday, and as Jill mentioned earlier, we had, you know, a couple people in the audience, which is normal, but hopefully they were able to learn a little bit about what, where our money goes in our system. But I encourage you to go to our website. Mr. Brumley has it broken out really well. You can read and see that the majority of our funds goes to pay our teachers and our employees. And in the event that we have, something comes up and we don't have as much money, then, then we would carefully consider where we could make those cuts, where we could back out those, maybe those extra things that we do offer. After we have gone through the channels of grants and such, we have incredible teams like our Career Tech and our Arts that have just been awarded, you know, thousands of dollars for their programs. So there is money out there. There are partnerships out there if you're willing to do the work, and, and our folks are willing to do the work and secure those funds for the extra things that we're so blessed to have at Coleman City Schools.
Thank you for your answer, and we will stay with you for student preparation. What more can Coleman City Schools do to prepare students for careers that don't require a four-year college degree?
So currently, we have partnerships with other organizations and CADA, so, so our students can get, you know, career training through that. What we are purposefully doing, and a lot of that points back to our expansion at the high school in the new Career Tech building, is bringing a lot of this in-house. So we really have more control over that, of the instruction, of the programs that we offer, and we, you know, reaching out and getting industry partners in that to, to encourage those students and keep them honestly from having to get on a bus and travel to a secondary location. We, through Ms. Brandon and her work, we've really dialed in and looked at our Career Tech curriculum and made those changes, looked at where the job opportunities were in our community. Where can we best serve our students and prepare them for jobs in our community? And that's what we're doing, to continue to grow that. And then, of course, we have our partnership with Wallace, what a fantastic resource. We're so, so blessed. So if we don't offer a cosmetology program, Wallace State does, so that person can, can go and, and take those classes and while they're in high school and get the certifications they need to enter into the career that, that they're choosing to. So I feel like we're on a great track with the efforts that we've made to improve our Career Tech offering and getting these kids ready to go into industry and to work.
Thank you for your answer. And Jessica, same question, student preparation. What more can Coleman City Schools do to prepare students for careers that don't require a four-year college degree?
Okay. Well, I would just like to say that my nephew, who graduated a couple of years ago from Coleman High School, was a part of the CADA Academy, and he went there and he learned some electrical skills because my dad and my brother were both electricians, and so that's what he decided he wanted to go into. College was not for him, which is fine, and, and I proudly support him in that. He learned a lot at CADA, and he is now working at a great job in the electrical field, making way more money than I ever did when I got out of high school or college. So I definitely want to keep supporting that. What I would like to see is maybe if we, if there's something that we don't offer that, you know, the Coleman County, the CADA Academy in Coleman County just got a big, large grant from Senator Gudger to build a new facility. Could we partner with them? Could we help our kids go there if there's something that we don't offer? Maybe teach more classes in the schools that deal with finance and budget, because if you don't plan on going to college, you're not still going to be relying on mom and dad, and you need to know how to take care of yourself with that job that you're getting straight out of high school. I think we could just encourage those kids more and tell them that it's great, that that's what you want to do, and we want to help you get there in the easiest path possible.
Thank you for your answer, and we will stay with you, Jessica, for this next question, which is parent engagement. How should the district improve the ways it listens to and incorporates parent feedback?
So being a PTA president for six years at West Elementary, parents and students and teachers were my main focus. One of the things I can say I'm most proud of was I started the Community Block Party at West Elementary, which we had all kinds of nonprofit vendors come and give out information to these parents that needed information about health services, about daycare, things like that, Kurt's Closet, anything that they had a need for. They could come out, they could have a good time, and they could go talk to these people and not feel like they didn't have information or know where to go to get that information. Secondly, I think we need school guidance counselors that are trained well, that are certified, that can handle these types of situations in the school, because sometimes these, these children fall through the cracks because maybe a guidance counselor just doesn't know what to do either. I also think that board meetings could be a little easier, and I agree with what Tyler said earlier. The Coleman County School System, they live-cast their board meetings. I think that's a great idea. I think the agendas are a little too complicated for parents to understand, so they don't really know what's going to be talked about. I've been to numerous board meetings. You go in there and it's like, okay, we're going to vote on item one, two, three. Yes, yes, yes. Okay, we're done. Nobody really understands what we just voted on, what is going on. We've got to make that more clear. We've got to encourage parents. We've got to have more community events for our schools.
Thank you for your answer. And Cheryl, parent engagement. How should the district improve the ways it listens to and incorporates parent feedback?
Our parents are vital to the success of our students. I don't know how exciting school board meetings are, and, and I'm sorry that I missed you when, when you were at our board meetings. We do recognize students on multiple occasions, and we also, during the school year, we cycle through. So we have board meetings at every campus, and we invite those parents and those community members to join in, and while we're there, we're able to spend a little time on that campus. That's, that's intentional. So we welcome, we welcome parents at board meetings, and fortunately, a lot of what is on our agenda is, you know, surplusing textbooks and things that are not super exciting, but is the business that we, we do attend to as a board. We appreciate our PTA parents, our homeroom mothers. I have multiple friends that serve in those roles throughout our entire system. I even did when my kids were younger. That is a great way for parents to become involved. Also served as a cheer mom, and I have 12 other really close friends that were cheer moms, and we, we had a great time with our daughters. I've served as a golf mom, cross-country mom, and all the other ways in which you can get involved. So, so for parents, we encourage you to get involved. We can't make parents choose that, but if you want to, if you want to support your child, there's a place for you, whether that be sports or academics or other clubs and events. There is a place in which you can belong and you can volunteer your services, and we're always helpful and always thankful for those parent volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you for your response, and we will stay with you, Cheryl, on extracurriculars. Do you believe extracurricular activities should be expanded further, scaled back, or maintained at the current levels, and why?
I think that's a trick question. I don't know that extracurricular activities are any different in Coleman City Schools than they are in other schools. We may offer, we may have a more, more of an offering, but I think that's great. I want every student to have a chance to find what they are passionate about and what they excel in. That might be football, but it may be art. It may be cross-country, but it may be band. We do have a place for every student, and I'm proud of that. I want to have that. We want to support that and applaud that. So we go. We go to the, to the performances. We go to, I was able to go to the band banquet at the end of the last year and really just enjoy the evening with those students and see their accomplishments and see how, what a community of students that is and how they, it was their place to belong. So for that, I'm thankful. And does it need to expand? I don't know. Maybe it does. Maybe somebody wants to start a pickleball club or, or whatever, and so we can look at that if, if we have the resources to do so. But, but I really would, would leave that up to the experts, and those are going to be our administrators and our teachers sort of thinking through those things and then having those conversations at the board level to do what's best for our schools and our students.
Thank you for your response on that question. Jessica, same question, extracurriculars. Do you believe that extracurricular activities should be expanded further, scaled back, or maintained at current levels, and why?
I agree with Cheryl. If, if there are other extracurricular activities that we do not currently have, yes, we should, we should talk about those. We should have people come to board meetings and bring those up, or, you know, students, go, go to principals, feel comfortable enough to go to principals and say, hey, what about this? What about that? I don't want to make football coaches and stuff mad, but I mean, I think we should definitely take a look and make sure that everything in our extracurricular activities are, are fair and that no one is getting looked over. I also think that, I had a conversation with a parent the other day that I was telling them that I was glad to see their child had joined the band. My boys play sports. I have one that plays basketball and football. I have one that's played football up until senior year, and then this year he decided to leave and go into co-op in half-day, because, let's face it, he loves money. So I'm very proud of him for that decision. He made that on his own. But I think that when it comes to extracurricular activities, if your child is involved in something, then that makes them feel like they are a part of something, and that helps take care of some of the bullying issues that we have. It's important to get your child involved. So if there's things that we don't have that we need to have, then yes, let's bring that to the table. Let's talk about that.
Thank you for your answer on that question, and we will stay with you on qualifications. What personal or professional experiences best equip you to assert effectively in this
So when it comes to certifications, I think that our teachers are very highly certified and qualified. I think that sometimes the problems that we are having lately is we have people that are younger than some of our very qualified teachers that are coming in and looking over their shoulders and maybe giving a little too much input. I understand that there are standards that we're trying to keep up with, but at the same time, those teachers know their standards, but they need to be but they need to be able to do it in their own way. I think we need to give more control back to our principals when it comes to those standards, when it comes to grading levels. I think we are asking to have too many grades and too many weighted grades. We need to take a look at that also. Our teachers are very qualified. We just need to keep that in place. And we need to make sure that we are still hiring competent and certified teachers and not just taking what we can get.
Yeah. Thank you, Jessica, for that question, answer. And Cheryl, this is qualifications. What personal or professional experiences best equip you to serve effectively in this role?
Initially, when I ran five years ago, I relied heavily on my interior design background. And within the interior design profession, there's vision, and there's planning, and there's implementation along the way to realize that goal, realize that dream. And that's really what I brought to the board. Since then, I've learned a whole lot about what it means to be a board member. And I have had the pleasure of serving with these men and women over the last five years who have respected my opinions and respected the things that I have to offer. So what does that look like now? Hopefully, I've, I've gained a little bit of information. But what I like to bring now is a collaborative spirit. But it's also seeking out best practices. So when we have the opportunity to talk to other board members, to other people across the state, we ask them, what's, what's successful in your district? What are y'all doing that's helping move the needle in this area or that area? It's very helpful to learn best practices. And we'll take that back and we'll say, hey, they're doing this in this, in this city, or even in this state, that's a little different than us. It gives us new ideas, fresh ideas. So I'm always open to that. And that might go back to my creativity and, and to my actual job and profession as an interior designer.
Thank you for your response. And Cheryl, we'll stay with you for this next question. Local versus mandates. How should the board respond if a state or federal education policy conflicts with what Coleman parents want?
We don't really have a choice. The fact of the matter is, we're a public school system. So we have people that we rely on, such as Senator Gudger as an example. So, so we want to have those close relationships with, with those, those people that represent us on the state level and the national level, Senator Britt. And we, we will make those calls. If that's something that doesn't reflect our community values, then we, we need to lean on the legislators because they're the ones that are creating those policies and voting on those policies, which do affect our, our school. But as we rely on funding from the state and from the federal government, we don't have the ability to not follow rules. So in the event that something like that happens, then we have to work the channels that, that we know we can work. And having a relationship, having a working relationship with them is the best way to see that our concerns are being heard on that level.
Thank you for your response. And Jessica, same question for you. Local versus mandates. How should the board respond if a state or federal education policy conflicts with what Coleman parents want?
So I think that one of the main things that we could do is we, like I was talking about earlier, is communicating with our parents, with our teachers. Talking to them and getting them helping us to go to these legislators and say, hey, we don't agree with this. We need to, we need to try to change this. Making sure we have good connections with those legislators, which I'm sure we already do. I spoke to Senator Gudger the other day at a Republican breakfast and told him that I thought we needed a crossover for the new Coleman Intermediate School. We've needed it a long time for West Elementary. And he was in total support of that and said he would love to talk to me more about that. I think we also need to be in touch with our AEAs. We need to empower our PTAs and our PTOs more and get them to go to the legislators, to Montgomery, to wherever we need to go. Because those parent voices mean us just as much as our board members and our teachers. Empower our students to speak out, too. That's important also. Let their feelings and their knowledge be heard.
Thank you for your response on that question. And Jessica, we'll stay with you for the final question. Accountability. What standards will you hold yourself to as a board member? And how should voters measure your performance?
So when it comes to accountability, I want everyone to think that I am doing the best job that I can, that I am getting the most information that I can, that I'm hearing all sides, that I will listen to all sides. I, I want them to hold me to the highest standard and expect the highest standard from me as a board member. I want them to know that they can come to me and feel comfortable to talk to me. I want teachers to know that I'm accountable to them, too. I want them to know that I am not just a person that was elected and that is sitting in that boardroom, that I am there. I am walking the halls. I am listening. I am looking. I see you and I hear you.
Thank you for your response. And Cheryl, same question on accountability. What standards will you hold yourself to as a board member? And how should voters measure your performance?
As a board member, I hold myself to the same standards that I do in my everyday life. I'm an honest, open, open-minded person. Every decision that I make at the board level is with one question in mind. Is this what's best for the students? So at night, when I lay my head down on that pillow, I can go to sleep and rest easy knowing that I made the best decision that I could in that moment with the information at hand. What's a little tricky about being on the board is that so many of the decisions that happen or that are made involve children or involve employees. And, and we may take a beating on Facebook, and we can't respond to that. We can't defend ourselves in that moment because that student deserves privacy. That employee deserves privacy. That's one of the most challenging things about serving on this board. So I spent Sunday night, two hours with a current teacher in a coffee shop because they just wanted to be heard, and I listened. My email is on the website. Many teachers have my personal cell phone number. I'm available. I will meet with you whenever. I will talk to you whenever. You can text, call, or meet in person. That is who I am as a person. People that know me understand that. When I'm invited to attend the schools, then I do. There's a, when you become a board member, there's a mandatory training that happens. It's a multi-day training, and you learn the roles and responsibilities of a board member. And in that, you learn about the chain of command. And it's important to respect the employees in our system. So if I jump down the chain of command and start doing a job that belongs to a professional, I might be stepping on some toes. That might not be best. That might be information that I have to kind of stay out of because that discipline may come before the board. And we may need, we may need to be as open as possible, not knowing all of the details. So it's a balance. It's a hard balance sometimes in dealing with.
All right. I know I said the last question, that was the last question from us. We do have a audience question. Do all candidates, all right, y'all can just answer yes or no. Okay. Do all candidates live within city, schools, and district?
I do.
I do.
All right. With all questions answered, this debate is over for place three. I want to thank both Ms. Savarni and Ms. Harrison for coming out. I know this is not fun to get on stage and have to answer most questions. Yes, I'm getting right to that. And, but I just want to thank you all for coming out and answering our questions. I know it's difficult. Ms. Harrison, we started with you on opening. So Ms. Savarni, you'll be able to go first on closing statements.
Okay, so I had a statement ready, but like Tyler, something came up. I did not understand your question a while ago on qualifications. So I'd just like to address that. My qualifications are that I have walked the halls. I have talked to teachers. I have talked to students. I have loved on students. It's time for us to get back to where our board members can walk through those halls and do the same things. That personal connection is what makes you a good board member. And I'm not saying that they didn't want to do it on their own. I think maybe there were higher powers that would not let them. And I know they started during COVID, and that was a very difficult transition. And most people were not allowed in the schools then. But we have to get back to that personal connection. I, as a former PTA president and as a substitute, know how important that connection is. And I know that seeing those board member faces in the school makes you feel like you're being heard and you're being seen. I am open to talking to anyone. If you know me, you know that that's my personality. I'll talk to you the same way here or out on the street. It doesn't matter to me. I want to talk to you. I want to hear what you have to say. Can I fix it all? No, probably not. But I can do my best to listen to you and make sure you feel like you've been heard. So if you would gladly vote for me next Tuesday, I would appreciate the chance to come in and try to get back to what we were as Coleman High School, Coleman Middle School, West Elementary, East Elementary, and now the Coleman Intermediate School used to be and what it can be.
Thank you for your remarks. And Ms. Harrison, your closing statements. You have 90 seconds.
Thank you to the Tribune and to Wallace for hosting us and for giving us this platform to have these important conversations. Yesterday, there was an article published in the Coleman Times. It was an article Q and A for school board candidates running in this election. One candidate took the opportunity to answer a very important question based on, the answer was based on rumor, hearsay, and untruth. Things like that can really be impactful and hurtful to our system. That can hurt the very people that we're trying so hard to give a voice to. Gossip does nothing for our system but tear it down. I'm for unity. I'm for working together. I think together, we can build a system that reflects the best of who we are or who we want to be. Together, we can support educators. Together, we can continue to raise the bar in academic standards. Together, we can ensure that every student in Coleman City Schools has the very best tools to succeed, not just in the classroom, but in life. Let's do this together. Like I said, my why is very simple. I believe in the power of student success. I believe in Coleman City Schools. I'm Cheryl Harrison. I would be humbled and honored to get your vote on Tuesday for Coleman City Schools, place three.
All right. Thank you for that. Thank you both for your closing statements, for answering our questions today. I want to thank you both for coming up.